Welcome to the February 20, oh no, March 1st, sorry. March 1st Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I ask everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then stay standing for a moment of silence to honor the firefighter in Buffalo that was tragically killed earlier this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right. Has the board had a chance to read the February 1st minutes as presented?
Yes.
I'll offer a motion to accept those minutes as presented.
Sir.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, first item on our regular agenda. Shops at Woodbury reviewed documents submitted for proposed amended site plan for previously approved mixed-use commercial center. Said property is located at the intersection of Losi Lane and Route 32. Melody Lane in Central Valley is known as the Village of Woodbury Tac Maps, Section 225, Block 1, Lodge 34 dot 1, 34 dot 22, and 75. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you speak over here?
Yeah. Just make sure the mic's on.
Got it. Good evening. My name's Anthony Morando. I'm an attorney with the Law Firm of Cuddy and Fader, and I'm working with Aaron in the shops on closing out this process. And first, we just want to say we're pleased to be here tonight and thank you. As we look at the agenda, we notice we're the only thing on, so we appreciate the focus and the time that this board is giving to us tonight as well as your staff members have, so we want to make sure we express that. And since we're the only thing on the agenda, I apologize in advance. You'll probably be sick of us very, very soon. As far as background of the project, we're going to skip through that. I don't think this board is unaware of the project. It's been around for several years.
What project?
The shops has been before you for several years. This board has worked hard with the applicant to get it to this place and bring it to close. As you know, it's under construction right now, so as you see Aaron sweat a little bit more through the night, there's a sense of urgency, of course, for him and the rest of us to get this closed out. Just one little sort of procedural background. Seeker is complete for this project. We've went through that process, and again, after some review that was done last year, was reconfirmed that Seeker was complete. So as far as tonight, big picture, you have a lot of paper in front of you, a joke, but this is, you know, this boils down to like me talking for a minute, but this, this paper shouldn't intimidate in terms of what has been refined for this project. This paper is my attempt, and this was Aaron's fault for allowing a lawyer to help assemble and put together the package, but this paper is to hopefully help make it streamlined and efficient so that everybody can sort of follow along as we go through this. The site, as you know, is a mixed-use site containing what we'll call nine buildings. There's not actually nine buildings, but nine pad sites where some, you know, certain, certain, we'll say building four and five, for example, part of one building or three and four. The first thing before you, as you mentioned, is the site plan. We're going to have Kevin from Kimley Horn walk you through it. We provided an overlay plan to show how things have been refined and tweaked, and each update that we show you is not willy-nilly. It's made because now we have end users in place, which we think the process was designed to accommodate. The board worked hard to create a framework for the project, and now we have actual tenants signed up, ready to construct and occupy. So as you can expect, when you have pretty, you know, well-known, high-end tenants that have been proposed, as you see on your agenda, they all have individual requirements that need to be accommodated. So one example which Kevin can get into is sort of a good example of how the changes are not substantial. You know, where a kitchen is placed inside of a restaurant or fast food establishment will dictate where the water line comes in. Well, then that'll dictate the water line maybe shifted six feet from where it was previously. Things like that have been refined, and that's what we're coming in to explain to you. So all this paper, in many cases, boils down to those type of changes. When Kevin goes through the overall site plan, we'll try to not conflate all the individual ARB applications, but I think it helps us all for him to walk through each one and just say, "Building two got a little larger, which forced the access to shift, which forced Building seven to pivot, which forced the parking spaces to change three feet." So we'll talk it through holistically, but it's not to say that each building requires its own new site plan approval or anything like that.
No, and I don't think anybody here expects to do that. We do want to handle the site plan as the site plan, get that, because that's, to us, is one object we have to deal with tonight.
Yep.
And then the four buildings are also all separate applications. So while you'll get up and talk about them in the overall site, we're still going to have to come back and go over them in each.
Absolutely.
Application.
We'll keep it high level just for context, so we understand. Absolutely. I think at this point, I'll probably hand it right to Kevin to get into it with the goal of kind of keeping this really, really clear and understood, and please ask questions so that we can address them quickly for you.
Thanks, Anthony. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's nice to finally be in front of folks instead of on a Zoom call. I'll go as quickly as I can through this, and I'm going to go. Kevin Van Heis with Kimley Horn on behalf of the applicant shops. I'll start at Building 1, which is the McDonald's building. This exhibit shows the buildings and the infrastructure in two colors, black and blue. It's a little bit difficult to see from that vantage point, so if you want me to bring it up and so you can look at it closer, please let me know. But you can see that generally, the buildings are all in the same position that they were as part of the approved site plan. Building 1, which is the McDonald's, there were some small changes that were made based on the operational direction that we received from McDonald's. One of their concerns was the entrance to the drive-through. We had originally shown that as a two-way aisle, and they requested, based on their experience, that that be a one-way circulation pattern with angled parking. So that is the main circulation change that you see associated with that building. In order to accommodate their stacking or their queuing, we did reconfigure the entrance into the drive-through. It gets a little bit closer to the building. There was some question about spaces to enable folks who are waiting for orders. There is, that's actually handled by the fact that there's a third window in this building. So the first window is where you pay, the second window is where you pick up your order, and if you have a delayed order, there's a third window where you would move to in-line. We do provide a 25, or a 20-foot wide access in the one-way, which is wider than is required. A difference that is specific to McDonald's is they require a heavy-duty concrete pavement in the drive-through area, which was shown as asphalt in ours. And then, as I said, there's a reconfigured order board area, but that's just to provide the bypass lane in actually a better position than it was in the approved plan.
So this is going to look more like the New Windsor one?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So the New Windsor one does have the three windows. Not that I ever frequent McDonald's, but they have, actually, they do have five pull-off spots to the right, and then they have three pickups or four pickup spots to the left. Be honest, every time I've gone there, every time I've gone to the third window, they've told me to go and.
To go in the way.
Go away. So just, I'm, just if you can, just figure out what they're going to use for those spots. And the only reason I ask that is because they have those teenage kids that run out with bags of food and kind of throw it to you, so.
Understood. Okay. They did, we actually were on a call today, and there's a new program where you can order online and you pick it up. And what, so that, what that does is it just increases the speed at which they can process all of the orders. Not everybody orders that way, but if the three cars in front of you have ordered that way, then they don't stop here. They just continue to move through. So it requires ultimately less queuing space for them to process an order. So there's not a lot of, there's not a significant amount of changes. We did, when we changed the, to a one-way driveway, we were able to make some changes to the parking configuration that improved the pedestrian circulation. It's a straight shot now, whereas before it angled in and out. So we feel that's a better, safer alternative. But again, Building 1 doesn't have a significant number of changes, in our opinion, from what was approved. So Building 2, based on the, on the feedback that we are getting from the market, that building approved at 2,170 square feet is difficult to lease. It's small. And so in response to that, we've proposed a larger building there. And so the way that we arrive at that is by reducing the square footage of Building 5, which hopefully will make the Building 2 pad more desirable. But in order to do that, because that building gets bigger, we had to move south, plan south. Now, if you remember the original Building 2, there were some concerns about the fact that the parking was in the back of the building. What we did when we created a bigger Building 2 was we're able to flip the building into the front, or flip the parking into the front, which makes more sense. But what it does is it forced us to create more, because we pushed south, we constrained what that drive-through area was for the Starbucks, which meant we had to move Building 7 and 8 to accommodate that. Same basic shape and size, but we moved it back to accommodate the bigger Building 2 space. We also had some, a lot of conversations with Starbucks about how their drive-through functions. They were concerned about the position of the loading space as approved. And so what we did was we moved the loading space to the end of the building and flipped that parking to the west end of the building. So now that parking is no longer behind the building, which was also a concern. It's now along the western side. I think that's it for Building 2. Again, not, not a significant amount of changes there. Really, it's just the position of the footprint on the site.
Something to just add as, as I was walking through this. Collectively, and where we're going with this, is collectively, and it's shown on the tables that you'll see both on the overall site plan and in the individual tables for each site, is that the overall, the key thresholds have all collectively reduced. So parking demand went down, or, you know, sewer and water demands have gone down, and that's all documented in there. And I know we'll get into some of the comments from your consultants later and about how to sort of double-check that against their math and our math to make sure, but we're comfortable that that ultimately is the conclusion and has been demonstrated. Something else you, just to point out as Kevin gets into some of the other buildings, there were four or five potential variances identified in Natalie's, sorry to interrupt Natalie's address, just to ease the board on this. Where there were potential for that, for example, it was a couple signage questions, there was something about loading. That's going to be refined to be compliant. We won't be seeking variances for that. So to the extent we have to, you know, catch up with Natalie, make sure that we're on the same page with how to refine it to make sure we're compliant, we will. So we won't have to go get ZBA variance from you. Just procedurally, I wanted to point that out.
So you're going to get McDonald's to drop their sign package?
We are going to talk to McDonald's about their sign package.
Because I think they had five signs. It was four.
There was five, yeah, and there's a little bit of gray area on what is actually a sign on some of those, which we just want to, we have to make sure that we're on the same page and we understand. Certainly don't want to assume without talking to your staff about it. But I think the point is, is we're going to provide a compliant plan so that we don't get, being really honest with you, Mr. Chairman, we can't be delayed by another process just because of where we are, so we have to, you know, there's certain things that we're going to have to refine to move the process forward.
Okay.
And helping move the process forward. Thank you.
There was a small shift in the parking on the south side behind 7 and 8, and that's really just to accommodate the Starbucks-specific drive-through configuration. It's really small. We didn't change the number of parking, but now that makes for a better queuing. It's actually longer queuing without having to interrupt with the loading space there. 3 and 4. This, you can see from, even from where you're sitting, that this building footprint didn't change very much either. There were some minor changes that we made to the pickup lane. This is not a drive-through. There's no order board associated with this. And we added a 250-square-foot seating area, which is at the request of the tenant. So that's now reflected here. There were some minor changes that we made to some of the parking on the northeast side. Again, not a, not a significant change. So Building 9, the hotel, that one, the tenant that we ultimately have, has ultimately committed to the site is Courtyard by Marriott. The original plan did not account or provide a courtyard, and so this plan provides that in the back. In order to do that, we needed to push the parking back to the west. We still fit. We still have the same, we lost a few spaces, but effectively the same amount. But what we had to do, and when we pushed that back, was to elongate the wall that was originally proposed there. It's the same height. It's just longer because we've pushed, we've pushed that back. We also, and you can't, you can't see it in this, but I can bring another exhibit up, where in response to the request to be compliant with the loading requirement, we are going to reconfigure this area here to provide the four loading spaces. We'll still provide the snow storage that's required. This gets reconfigured a little bit because we've got to fit a generator in that, in that area as well. So that's it. Those are the big changes. There's no change to Building 6. We don't have a tenant there. There's no tenant for Building 5, so we were able to reduce that square footage. So the reasons that we made changes were because we had tenants who requested or required us to make those changes.
Does the board have questions?
Yes, all right. Hi, hi, everybody. Just to kind of recap on some of the things that Anthony and Kevin have already indicated, you know, as part of your resolution, it was evident that an amended site plan or individual site plan reviews were going to be required once tenants were specified. There was discussion about shared parking analysis and that being updated, as well as identifying sprinkler room locations and making sure that ESO access to these buildings was appropriate. There were some comments that were raised about parking spaces location, locations and proximity to certain buildings, specifically Building 2, which have been addressed. So some of that, you know, that's just to be expected. And in general, we kind of agree with Anthony's statement that the changes are relatively minor and ultimately seem to appear to be less of an impact than the original approval. Our memo does note a lot of technical comments and just minor discrepancies that we think, you know, can be resolved in future plan submissions. So I'll kind of just go over a couple of them with you now. Also, just kind of along that line, you know, you've received ARB appro, or ARB documents now for, I think, five or six of the nine buildings. So 2, 5, and 6, where tenants haven't been specified, it is possible that additional site plan amendments could be required at a future time, you know, but we're looking at this comprehensively for the site, for the buildings, that they know where tenants exist, and then the ARB for those individual applications that you've received so far. So one of the things, high level regarding the uses that are proposed for the site, they're consistent with your prior approval, except for one building, is now going, is now being proposed as a medical use. That is a permitted use in the zone. It's just going to be an additional use for this site that wasn't previously approved. So I just wanted to note that for the board's information. We've asked the applicant to add a building height and setback table to the plan that was shown on the prior approval or the prior plans that were approved. And due to the shift in the building locations on the site, we just want to make sure that they're complying with the setback requirements. Specifically, the side yard setback for this zone is one and a half times the building height, or 30 feet, whichever is greater. So in particular, Building 2, which is now shown right up against the setback line, you know, we'll be looking for confirmation that that complies. But again, Anthony has already indicated that they're going to revise the plans to comply, so we'll see that on a future revision, hopefully, right? We've asked the applicant to confirm their coverage calculations. They have noted a significant reduction from the prior approval, but it's not clear to me, you know, where they're, where they're gaining all of that, you know, pervious area. So we'll look for confirmation on that. They did receive a variance for that previously, so if that needs to be amended based on the current plans, we'll look for that, too. With respect to the parking, again, the applicant's plan demonstrates that there is an overall reduction, but we did have some technical comments that we'll look for clarification on. With respect to the utilities, we did not receive plans for the revisions to the water, the sewage, the drainage, grading, retaining wall. So, you know, something that I would like to see at the outcome of this is something that we can kind of replace the pages from the old plan set with the new, so that there's one complete file. I don't know if that's something that the board agrees with, but, you know, to me, if there's pages that need to be added, that's one thing, but, you know, sort of a C-2.0 gets replaced with new C-2.0 would be really helpful, I think. So that's something that we would like to see, so the applicant can kind of take note of that unless the board disagrees. With respect to the water and sewer demand, again, the site is served with water from the Village of Harriman. The sewer connects to the portion of the village's collection system that's unmetered and flows by gravity to the Harriman Sewage Treatment Plant. They have indicated that there is an overall reduction in the proposed usage, but we did ask for clarification on the sewer, and that information that was considered by the village board previously as part of the developers' agreement. Let's see. Kevin kind of discussed some of the retaining wall changes, in particular near the hotel site. They have extended the length of the retaining wall in that area. It follows closely the property line. The code does require, or has certain requirements for step-back from property lines, so we'll just look for their plan to confirm that that complies. There was another retaining wall, I think, that was added north of the hotel, so the same. We'll just look for information on that, specifically related to the grading and the heights. On signage, we did look at the freestanding sign and the information that was provided on that. Recently, you reviewed an application for Woodbury Common and the freestanding sign, and we consulted with Mike on the area of the sign and whether or not the framework should be included in those area calculations. He opined that that did, that that should be included, and thus referred that application to the ZBA. At that time, I sent him the plans for this sign as well, knowing that the pylon, that sort of supports where proposing the actual text, you know, whether or not that would be considered incidental, which I think is the trigger word in the definition of the code. So he felt, he were key opining that that should be included in the area calculations. So right now, as it is, the area of design is not compliant with the code, so that would require a variance unless the applicant adjusts the plan. With respect to my memo, I'll just skip a couple of the comments, and, I mean, with respect to the loading berths, it sounds like the applicant's going to revise their plan to comply. That was just something that I wanted to note for the board, another potential trigger there for the ZBA. We did discuss that with counsel. Also, I think this loading berth issue kind of comes up a lot with hotel applications and whether or not the code requirements are excessive. So I think there's some room there to discuss that with the village board, you know, and what a proper recommendation for how many loading berths based on the area of the hotels is appropriate. So like right now, I forget, I think it's one per two, or 25,000 square feet, which would require four loading berths for this hotel, and, you know, would that really be needed? Probably not. It's probably one per 25,000 square foot building footprint. You know, I don't actually know personally how many deliveries come and go from hotels, but I was just trying to think with high level, what could it be? And, you know, I think, I think four for this is probably too much, but anyways, that's for another board and another matter, just so you guys know where I'm thinking on that. So yes, again, those are like the comments I think that our memo raised that would require maybe another approval or another board, or, you know, something that the applicant really needed to look, take a close look at. So otherwise, you know, we'll just assume that we can kind of review our memo and respond with a future revision unless the board has any questions.
Board have questions for Natalie?
No.
Yes. I have a question. Being Chief Burke had to run out the door. Hydrants moved? Because we had three separate meetings on.
Did you hear me? Because I whispered to Kevin, bring out the hydroplan.
Yeah.
While he's pulling that out, because we did have it prepared to explain to you, two quick things to follow up, just to make sure I'm on the same page procedurally, because we're just trying to set a path forward that's really efficient.
Right.
The coverage, we're going to, we're going to look back at that, and Kevin looked at it today, so we won't exceed our variance that we have, so that'll be fine. But we will make sure of that and document it. The other thing with the pylon sign, they're correct. It will be refined to be co-compliant. We didn't have a, we didn't speak with the building inspector ourselves, but if that's the case, it's unfortunate. It's a lovely sign, but if they're going to include the brick veneer in it, then we're probably just going to lose the brick veneer, unfortunately, and make it, make sure it's co-compliant. Because like I said at the outset, we're not going to go forward with the ZBA process. It's for the sign. So those were the two other procedural elements that I think came up. And then, as far as the hydrants go, we actually wanted to, this is a really good example of when you see the utility stuff. It's, 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 lines are moved four feet, 12 feet, like it's, it's, the infrastructure is really in place for what was approved, but it's refined. So Kevin, if you want to walk through the individual hydrant.
And I think that this is that cascading effect. When we made changes based on the tenant requirements and moved buildings slightly or changed parking, oftentimes that had an impact on where a hydrant was. So starting here, it's difficult to see from there, but this is a 16-foot move to the east. So it's still within the same curb line that it was. It was originally here. When we changed the architecture, we had to move it 16 feet to the east, but it's still generally in the same area. Building 5, because we shrunk it, we moved the curb line in. It was originally, the curb line was out here. We moved that 19 feet to the east. It's effectively in the same position it was to this building as it was before, because we made the building smaller, we moved the hydrant towards it. Here, we moved it 10 feet to the west, and this was because we changed to the one-way configuration of the drive-through approach. And it was here, now it's here. It's moving it over the width of a parking space. Here, we moved it over the width of two parking spaces, and that's because when we moved the loading space and flipped the parking that was here to here, we had to move the hydrant that was at the curb face here to the edge of the parking here, which is two parking spaces.
Well, not the one on the bottom right where the Starbucks is. That moved too?
Yes, it did. And that is because when we moved the building, when the, when this building moved to accommodate the bigger footprint of Building 2, it changed this approach into the drive-through because we had to push this down, and when we pushed this down, we had to move it to the east 15 feet. So in terms of coverage, it's, we're still there. We're not, we haven't removed any hydrants from areas where they were originally proposed. They're just small relocations.
And nothing moved out where the hotel is?
No. Nope.
We didn't get this planned yet, right? We didn't get this one yet?
No, we put it together.
No.
Okay, because I do want to give it to Chief Burke just to double-check, because I personally, being a fireman, the one in the bottom left, to me, even though you say it's two spaces, that's, you've moved it deeper into where the parking, so that's more of an obstacle to get around. It being on the curb on the other side was, it was easier to pony up to. So let, just let, we'll let Chief Burke give his blessing on the moves.
Sure.
So if you could send us this page.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll provide it as soon as possible. You raised a big question. You raised a big question.
No, we will if we need one. And it really, it's, it's going to be fire that has to just weigh in on the changes. Ambulances and police cars aren't going to be affected by the subtle moves. It's fire engines that are a little bit, and ladder trucks are a little bit harder to move around. I know, because I know the original plans we got it just had the turning radiuses for a
Garbage truck.
A garbage truck, which is just a little bit smaller than a 52-foot long ladder truck.
You know what that was, too? We, we, we tried really hard. Natalie had mentioned the resolution of approval, and I think I sleep next to that thing right now. But I went through each, each one, and we, we just identified, it was, I think it was in there, refuse removal plan that had to be provided. So we tried to provide everything that was specifically asked, but certainly no problem providing it and happy to meet with the chief.
Yeah, because I know there's some curbs and stuff that moved too, right? They became either, they became mountable curbs or, yeah. Which mountable curbs are great, but they're not always so mountable sometimes, depending on, you know, your definition of a mountable curve. I've seen people give me a six-foot curve and say it's mountable, and really, so. Yeah. Don't give up the day job. Don't give up the day job. Any other questions on this, or for Natalie, we go to Phil?
Those, those new seating are, they have followers.
I think it's in Starbucks ARB, right?
Yes, we thought you'd have one other meeting.
Yeah. Mr. Phil? Dr. Phil, sorry.
Good evening. So our inquiry, what you do on the letter outlined a few areas of concern, but I think most of them can be addressed pretty easily. Probably the biggest issue, I guess, or clarification the applicant can make is this, the site was based on shared parking, and the development of the different buildings, we want to make sure that it is adequate parking in the areas secured in terms of the construction activities. So I, I haven't really seen how that's planned out. Maybe you could either describe it or provide a plan showing the phase and sequencing and how that will work and where areas will be closed off from public. I think that's probably the biggest thing that we're concerned with. We have comments on the individual site plans, which we're going to get into those separately.
Yeah, we'll do each ARB separately.
And then, you know, the comment about the fire access and, you know, again, those are the individual plans that we're talking about. But I think it's important that the meeting be set up at the fire department just to review everything relative to all the circulation matters. But really, it's how is the park going to be handled? And how is it going to be controlled that people are isolated from areas that are under construction versus, you know, where buildings might be open or in? I, I don't think it's a problem. It just needs to be spelled out and coordinated with the village probably.
Yeah, so I think Kim Lee will provide a plan and confirm that for me? No problem. And also, just by way of background, the project was approved as phases. So it's 2A, 2B, 2C. 2, 2C was basically the hotel. I forget where it's split on the 2A, 2B, but the applicant is building out the site at all at the same time.
Okay. That's where I wasn't clear.
Yeah. So it's all under construction. So it shouldn't be an issue, but we can provide a, a plan that documents that.
That was the most important issue, the off-site improvements. I think, I haven't seen a copy of the final permit, but if you could just provide that from the village, the DOD. But, you know, all the improvements are shown on the plans, and I know that the permit was ready to be issued several months ago, but I never saw it. So if you could just get a copy of that from the village.
Anybody have questions for Phil? So overall, we're okay with the changes?
Oh, okay, the changes, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get that. Or just, Kelly, are we, could we do that meeting via Zoom if we had to meet with the ESOs?
As long as it is not any majority of you, and it's just the two of you, you can have that meeting with the ESOs by Zoom.
Okay.
And touch on a couple other things?
No. But of course.
I just wanted to let the board know that as far as secret, I know that Anthony touched on it briefly, but you did previously go through this, and the board can reaffirm secret finding statements. If it finds that this is consistent with what was approved. We have no referral, it was recently referred in February 16. We don't have a response back yet, so no action can be taken tonight, obviously. And a public hearing is required for amended site plans.
Should we hold off on reconfirming secret on, because there was the question about coverage and within the variance?
I thought they said that it would, well, you can reaffirm secretly represented tonight that they will not be requesting any variances and will not find a plan to not move.
Okay.
And if that changes, you can revisit the funding.
Okay. Anybody have anything for council, questions for council? Uh-oh, just going to the bullpen. So I got to re, I got to reread the whole secret statement? I just can't make a motion to reaffirm it?
You can, you can make a motion to reaffirm.
I'll offer a motion to reaffirm secret. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Yeah. I just finally got my voice back. And then I will offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for the site plan modifications for April 5th.
April 5th?
Should be our next meeting, right?
No, we have one in March.
No, the one, we pushed everything. Everything I would have put on this meeting, I pushed to the, I pushed to the March meeting to do this meeting, so.
I just want to remind the board that the 5th is passover, so as long as you're going to have a forum here and that's okay with the applicant.
All right, first with the board.
I'm okay with it. I'm okay.
Yoohoo. Actually, my wife's birthday, I'm really okay with it. Are we good with the 5th? Okay. So I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for April 5th.
Second.
Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. All right, good night. Oh, just kidding. Next item on the agenda. Oh, look at that, it's the shops at Woodbury. ARB Building 1, review ARB documents submitted for Building 1 McDonald's to be located within the previously approved mixed-use commercial center. Said property is located at the intersection of Losy Lane and Route 32 in Central Valley, and is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Section 225 Block 1 Lot 34 dot 1, 34 dot 22 and 75. See, that easel week, that one we can read. I was wondering, did they send you, I was wondering if you got centered or something.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. This is the McDonald's building. It's, you know, in, in line with their, their new, new motifs and style. The majority of the building is Hardy Plank, which is the lighter gray or the taupe color. The, these panels are, EPHIS panels are long, which are, you know, panels in the area where the dining area is. There, these panels along the, there's the three drive-in windows, and then these are aluminum panels at the drive-through or drive-in windows. And then we have, what else? I'm actually pitch hitting here. Then we have the battens on the corners to tie things down, the vertical battens, aluminum battens. And then the, all the fascia is also aluminum. Colors are specified, you know, on this chart. And then also, as part of the application, is extremely detailed elevations, which call out, again, the materials, the manufacturer, the model numbers, specific colors for each of the, each of the pieces of the sods. And so there's two of those.
In regards to the signs on the buildings, which ones are you saying, I'm assuming it's the ends that you're going to say are not signed or?
So, right now, the, our, our position is, is that McDonald's are signs. We're only entitled to have one. We've discussed this with McDonald's, so the next time you see these plans, it'll only be one wall-mounted sign. But the logos, you know, we're, we're hoping that they are not signs and that they're just a logo.
So we're going to, now that we're going to ask the building inspector for, to opine? Okay.
But we are going to deliver, you know, depending on what Mike's position is on, on the logos, we were going to deliver a plan for you to review and approve that complies. All right.
Any questions? It's McDonald's, it's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
My other one, sorry, I have a question, not a question, a comment. Yes, architecturally, I just think that maybe, you know, underneath those drive-throughs, you have the Hardy Plank sign, and maybe that would look better if that was a, matched the Lufthansa metal back that surrounds the switching over materials.
We can run that by them?
Any other comments if you'd like some?
And then you'll update, when the new submission comes in, you'll have the drawings marked off what they're going to use or pull up. Or even though they're telling you it's the third window, I think everybody in this room knows it's not how it works.
Yeah, you're going to need the spots.
They need the spots, yeah. Okay.
Do you have questions on the delivery now or later?
You guys know.
Just observation, the Monroe McDonald's, I observed the tractor-trail pulling in in the morning. What hours are they making deliveries? And the reason I'm asking is, they parked in the drive-through area, if you know how McDonald's is laid out there. In ours, I see some parking right across in the plan. So I'm questioning, where would the tractor-trail park?
You want to grab a plan?
Delivery, what time would that be? Because it would seem to block, if it's in the morning, it would seem to block out all that parking right next to the drive-through.
What we've heard from McDonald's is they can schedule those deliveries to off-peak times. And that's what they would do in a situation where they didn't have a loading space or they had constrained parking. And so that would be something that we would discuss with the franchisee.
Yeah, I was looking at your map. If they parked right where I think they were to park, they would block out all that, all that parking area if the other store adjacent to it was open.
Right.
But if it's going to be off-hours, I guess, can you see the parking right across? Normally would park right there?
Right.
And would block all that parking if it's off-hours. I guess it doesn't make a difference.
Typically, services to these types of buildings are off-hours, you know, both refuse pickup and deliveries, but we'll confirm that with McDonald's.
What's the hours of the office in the weekend?
No, we don't know. We can also confirm that as well. You don't have the square footage anymore. Look at me, if you look at the square footage, I think it's 900 square feet of dining area. You got like 100 feet of vestibule and 300 feet of bathroom, and that's it.
Natalie? McDonald's?
Oh, wait, here we go. Sorry about that. All right, so real quickly, I can run through our memo. And, you know, what I sort of discussed before about you, or tenants for 2, 5, and 6 haven't been decided, so you don't have ARB materials to kind of review for those applications. But for this site, and in accordance with the ARB criteria of your code, you're typically looking for similarity and dissimilarity among, you know, buildings within the neighborhood, you know, within 300 feet. So we've just noted now you have ARB materials for buildings 3, 4, 7, 8, and 9. So we think it would be, and 1, obviously, this is the subject application. So we think it would be appropriate for you to consider all of those materials in consideration of the similarity and dissimilarity criteria. We've asked the applicant to confirm the use of non-reflective windows on the plan in the ARB form per your code. The applicant should confirm if the dumpster enclosure is proposed to be the standard that was approved previously, or if there are changes, they should provide that information for your review under ARB. With respect to the signage, we will. One of the things that I've talked early about is for another application in Woodbury Center, it was Popeyes. You may recall that they had to go for a variance for the number of wall signs as well. Popeyes had logos, they were the small circular logos, and at the time, they had to receive variance. You know, for them, they consider a wall sign. So we can still discuss this with Mike, but I think there's a little bit of precedent here, so to be honest, whether or not, you know, you want me to continue to have that conversation with him or, you know, ultimately, now that they've agreed to comply or receive a variance essentially. So I'll still reach out to Mike. Okay. The other thing is, we asked the applicant to confirm that the size of the signs comply with the code. The code permits 10% of the wall area, the total wall area per sign, or actually, the total of the signs left on both the side. So the applicant should be compliant with that requirement. We tried to address compliance with the fire approval. We've listed the provisions that we think are applicable for ARB for each application and whether or not the board needs to kind of discuss some of those, you know, secret findings or those conditions in the resolution to kind of focus on record, if you will. So one of the things that comes out is in the resolution, there was discussion of the planning board to consider a master tenant signage plan. The way that happened is proposing the ARB applications now or, you know, signs refers to individual building, you know, if they're appropriate. But I just wanted to, yeah, close the loop on that condition and confirm, you know, whether or not it would be the board's preference to have that master tenant signage plan or kind of deciding moving forward with individual ones who have their proposed. Another thing that I wanted to raise is, um, the sound of, or the determination with the secret finding statement. So one of the conditions of the finding statement for fellows was for, associated with ARB for consideration of the use of peats with formers, large front linels with overhangs, natural color, varying sod materials. So we just wanted to, again, raise that sort of consensus that you can kind of consider that associated with this application and all of the other ARB applications for this site. You know, decide whether or not you think it's compliant. And then with, I think that's actually it for this particular building, but I just wanted to raise with the board's consideration, you know, with all other ARB applications. Probably we've not identified on it, but make a public hearing for ARB, you know, depending on your expressions, so that's all.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions for Natalie? You look like you wanted to say something.
Oh, no, I, well, I do. I just want to say, correct, once I set out the site plan, I did get the 239 report from the county late today, and I just saw it and I knew it was a little determination. But moving to this McDonald's application, a GML referral is not required. We did send it to the county anyway. But moving to this McDonald's application, a GML report was not required, we did send it to the county anyway, just, uh, the county has proof of the, oh, here it is in your discretion, and the individual ARB application is not subject to this.
Is not?
Subjected to this.
Okay, thank you. So Natalie brought up a good point, there was, um, the site plan was originally considered the master signage plan and the ARB considerations. At that point, we really knew what was going in there, right? So it was, it wasn't gonna be a bunch of little stores, was it gonna be national tenants, was it gonna be a mix of national tenants or little stores? Now, this to me now, right now, with the three, four in front of us are all national tenants. They're all gonna have their own requirements as far as, um, colors, design, shapes, right? Like McDonald's has a look, Aspen Dental isn't have, like, has their own look, Courtyard has their own look. So I, I don't think it would behoove us to try to put a master signage plan together for this, just as long as each site complies with the individual code for signage for the buildings. So if they don't, then again, they'll have to seek their variances if they need to, whether they want more signs, more colors, or bigger than what they're allowed.
Well, we've done in the past, too, if it's more colors, if it's a national sign.
Right, we can, for a national logo, we can, we can, we can waive that if it's a, it's a, it's a registered logo or something like that. But I just don't want to, I mean, like McDonald's is yellow, Cholula is red.
Yeah, no.
Aspen is blue and white, Courtyard is green, greenish. So we're gonna say everybody's gotta have those color signs, I mean, that would look really
Yes.
awful. So I'm okay, and I know the rest of the board is okay, is not coming up with this, a, a site-wide signage plan.
I agree with that.
Okay. Okay. That's signage plan, and as far as an ARB style, again, you're dealing with national brands, I don't know, I think we're gonna be able to tell Courtyard or McDonald's that
You can't do that.
You can't do that, you have to put a final signing, uh, for a stone.
Yeah, I think we're pretty set on the board, okay.
I think what it's gonna do is it's gonna set the precedent for maybe the, if there's other little stores that come in that don't have
That are national.
That aren't a national brand.
They'll have to gel with that.
So I think maybe that's what the board may want to consider doing or thinking about, is we go forward with these applications that if they bring a, a smaller store in that doesn't have a national presence or a national brand, they're gonna have to comply with
They're gonna have to comply.
What look like, what the other stores in, uh, development
Well, they'll be coming in on their own ARB.
Right, each site will still come in on their own ARB.
Be similar, dissimilar to those stores around.
But I think for the applicant, it's that something going forward, where you start building, thinking about these other sites now, you know, we're kind of setting the tone here with the bigger pad sites, the anchor sites you're bringing in, so those other sites are gonna have to conform, or look a little bit more similar to the rest of the site. Again, unless we, you bring another national brand in. Does that make sense?
Not so much.
Okay. All right, so we, we covered those two topics.
Hey, we're moving on.
Woo-hoo. All right, uh, public hearing, I know ARB gives us the ability to waive, typically, we've done that for private dwellings, uh, where there's not a substantial impact, or there's not usually a lot of people that want to have something to say. I don't know how the board feels, um, with this being a commercial.
Can we do it as one?
I was thinking, gonna say, can we do it all, I was gonna do it all on the fifth.
Yeah.
Just, we're gonna, we have to have the public hearing for the site plan anyway. That we, that we, that we can't waive.
And who you said is an umbrella for all of the site plans? I mean, probably applications.
Yeah, well, that was hopefully going forward, my plan tonight was, because they all need, um, public hearings, or could potentially need public hearings, was April 5th would be public hearing day for the shops at Woodbury. So everything would be under that same day, this way it's not pushing anything out any further.
They're ready to do it.
Okay. Everybody's, board's okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll offer, uh, a motion to schedule a public hearing for this application on April 5th.
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's that, that's, that's, Kelly, we didn't do, sorry. Okay, next item in the agenda, ooh, let's see, is it just gonna change? Ah, shops at Woodbury, ARB, Building 3. Review ARB documents submitted for Building 3 to be located within, uh, previously approved mixed-use commercial center. Said property is located at the intersection of Losy Lane 32 and Central Valley, is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 225, Block 1, Slot 34 dot 1, 34 dot 22, and 75.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, professionals. I guess, am I still under oath, Charles P. Dietz. I presented before you for the ARB for Buildings 7, 8, uh, the end of 2022. Here is the architect for both Buildings 3 and 4 as well, which you see before you. What we have added, because I believe the board did ask for this, uh, we've taken our simple boxes of a footprint, and because we have tenants with negotiations that are serious about this site and looking to come on, onboard, they've given us actually their interior layouts. So we have the layouts for both Chipotle Building 3, Aspen Dental Building 4, and then I'll get to Starbucks later. As Kevin mentioned, uh, the new wave we're seeing in drive-through restaurants is what they're calling now a pickup window instead of a drive-through. As you can see here, uh, you order online, it tells you on the app how long before your order will be ready. You come in, you go directly to that window, and you pick it up. There's no order board, no menu board, you don't do any ordering from your car, uh, on this site. You do it remotely, it tells you your order is ready, you drive up to the window, you pick it up, and you exit. So that was one of the minor adjustments that Kevin spoke about when we did a final coordination with Chipotle, where that pickup window and that bump out was actually going to be, uh, on the site. The second thing we did, because neither tenant wanted to give up any square footage, understandable, we created a small landlord room, which will be probably where the sprinkler system, the roof ladder, the common landlord panel and whatnots. We created a small, uh, 97-square-foot room in the landscape area, which was not part of the original approval, but it's a utility room that'll service both tenants in the building, uh, but will not be within their actual space, you'll have an outside door to get into it. And lastly, we didn't have previously, uh, once we got Chipotle onboard, they requested and require an outdoor seating area, which you see before you, and I think Kevin, uh, mentioned how big it was. And again, based on the comments we received from the ARB for Building 7, any outdoor seating, we're proposing a protective railing system and a series of bollards across the front, because there is parking, this doesn't have parking directly next to it, but drive aisles are there. So we're showing a detail for the decorative six-inch bollard that will be consistent throughout the property wherever there's outdoor seating. And then this is actually Chipotle's specific outdoor railing system that defines, not only defines the patio, but also helps protect patrons from crossing and cutting, you know, through drive aisles where they shouldn't be. So that's now currently shown on the, on the drawings. Again, based on comments we received from the ARB at Building 7, you wanted to see all the rooftop units to make sure that they could be screened. So we've now added that to the plans, and these are specific units from the specifications that we've gotten from each of the tenants. So this isn't us just, you know, plopping some units on the roof. These have actually been looked at by our MEP engineers. This is what will be going up on the roof, these are the sizes, these are pretty much the locations that we're speaking about. So this is an accurate depiction, you can see we have these mansarts and parapets all around the building, so these units will be screened, uh, from the general public and population when they're on premise, and you won't see, or basically, they're small units, so the noise factor is very minimal. They're small.
What about up the new corridors?
We did a site analysis for Building 7, because everybody was concerned what it looked like from the highway. But again, these parapets are pretty tall. As you can see, my roof lines are, you know, down here, 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 here. So you can see there's a substantial parapet pretty much around the building. So, uh, you know, if they are visible in any way, shape, or form, we will have a third-party screening system that hangs off the unit, does not have to be penetrating into the roof, that we could have made with panels, you know, similar colors to what's on the building, and they would screen the mechanicals, that way we've used that in many municipalities in New York and New Jersey, where we've done a lot of these retail buildings. Again, the, uh, the materials are consistent but different. Each of the buildings, uh, from my original design, now that we got Chipotle onboard and Aspen, they had some specific requirements. So they, they wanted more of a neutral background behind their sign, less wood, less stone there, so we was, it was a give and take over the last three or four months between our office and Aaron's, and, and these tenants, of keeping my architectural theme that I developed for the property, but still giving each of the tenants their little bit of identity. So we will have a cultured stone, we'll have some stucco, we'll have some hardy panel, we'll have some brick, uh, as you can see, and those will be carried, again, as I testified previously, basically, all these buildings, as they sit on the site, are freestanding pads, right? They're visible on all four sides. So we've really tried to bring the materials around all four sides. Even though you're gonna have a back house, you're gonna have some electric panels out there, you'll have some gas meters, so on and so forth. We have brought the good materials around all four sides of the building, so it's not your conventional highway shopping center where nobody sees the back, and they just, you know, build block and paint it and call it a day. All these buildings that I'm involved in, as you see on the site, have visibility all the way around, so we've incorporated the, the better materials consistently around all four sides of the building. And then, uh, based on signage, again, based on what the ARB asked us during Building 7 review, we have added a chart, and we do comply, not necessarily, this building, we do comply with the number of signs, we're proposing one facade sign per tenant. But we do provide a calculation that shows the area of the facade that it's on, and then it meets the calculations in your ordinance, and all the colors that we're proposing are either two colors or three colors, which is below the four-color limit that's in your ordinance as well, and I know your professionals brought that up in their reports. So for Building 3 or 4, we're not showing any variances for, for facade signs. And then again, based on what we heard during Building 7, we've created a finished chart and have taken the, uh, materials right off the website from the manufacturers of what those will look like. We do have, because it mentioned in the report, we might have two different cultured stones. Different style, shape of stone, little different color. One or two different colors of hardy panel, couple colors of Ephes, the storefronts, the metal coping, so on and so forth. Will be a little bit different, but still consistent as we go through the whole property. So I think you'll get basically the broad band of it's, they're unique enough, but yet there's enough consistency to tie the whole shopping center and property together as a cohesive design and a cohesive complex. Uh, we have a decorative wall sconce that we're proposing. So really, that's it for Building, Building 3, as you can see, outdoor dining, some decorative sidewalk, the full fixture layout, the pickup window, facade materials and signage are conforming.
Now, how many stores does Chulop, they have this new drive, no actual order board, you just kind of?
I know there's some other national tenants that we're working on on other properties that are talking about, and I think you talked about McDonald's, right? They might have the same thing. So again, McDonald's is so popular, so big, they can't just give away the order board, but I think they're integrating it. Chipotle is a smaller band, they just decided that, they didn't used to have drive-throughs, but they wanted to accommodate during the pandemic, the ability for people to pull up and not have to get out of their car. So you just, everybody now has an app, you download the app, you sit there at home or in your, wherever you are in work, you, you put your order in, you pay with your credit card, it says come in 15 minutes, you pull into the shopping center, maybe there's one or two people ahead of you, everybody's just grabbing their order and go, no monies exchanged, no ordering, no menu boards, no glaring sounds, no horns, and all that type of stuff. You used to fly in with the old order boards and those types of things. So I think that's the wave of the future, and I think a lot of these start coming out from the pandemic. I have a Just Salad, I have a Panera, I have all these types of national, they're all going to that now with these pickup windows because of the pandemic, where they lost so much business when they were closed.
Landscape, we haven't discussed landscape at all.
That, I guess, would be Steve, but yeah.
There is a landscaping. No, there is a landscaping.
Outer, okay.
I don't, I, we can talk about it again, but there is for the whole the whole site has a
So it hasn't changed at all with the difference?
No, right.
Just shifted, probably wherever our curb shifted or our sidewalk shifted.
Do you have the gas service? Do you have natural gas or coal?
We have natural gas. We have natural gas, it would be natural gas then.
Are those bollards, uh, sparklers cured there?
Yes, yes. They'll either be embedded into the concrete or bolted through with a plate and the whole bit, so yeah, they would, you know, a car moving 30 miles an hour would probably blow through it, but it, it gives you a definition, they're tall enough that you'll identify with it if you're parked here or coming around the curb, that there's something along this edge that you're not gonna get that close to the curb as you come around the bend. And the same with Building 7, when you pull in. Uh, they're taller, and then the rest of it will be, you know, this 36-inch-high fence.
So the bollards are hollowed out, they're not over, they're not over steel and concrete shell?
These are proposed not to be, but these are, these are like cast iron.
No, cast iron's brittle, it's easy, it's easy to, it's easy, right. The only reason I say you got a seating area, that's what it, to me, it's more decorative than protective of the seating area. If you're gonna have a seating area with parking there, or next to it.
Right.
You, what, and the bollards are nice, but what should be there is going to protect the patrons that are sitting there, not just make it look pretty.
Okay.
So maybe we can put a steel bollard and then take those and put them over it, so
There's opportunities to do that with something like this, yes.
It's done in the comments all over the place, I know plenty of contractors that do it, so. We, we like functional, but we also like, we want people to be safe, too.
Point well taken.
Okay.
Want to comment on the, I really like the south facade, I think it's nicely broken up. And, uh, you know, maybe just a little bit of different storefronts and different architectural elements. I'm wondering, on the north facade, if there's a way you could maybe break up that large front of the left base.
Over here.
Like, you have that ear, that dome there that goes to the roof.
Right.
To the right. Maybe there's a way to do that similar architecture.
I've done that before, we've introduced pilasters or some other things, I can certainly speak to the client about that, and we've done that on the rear buildings before. I'm just finishing a multi-building shopping center by my office in Morris County, New Jersey, and has seven buildings all across the front, that fade back to the residential. We ended up bringing these materials, and then they wanted some additional relief along that facade, so we can certainly look at that.
Good point. Any other questions? So?
Um, I'm surprised the trash is at the very front entrance, right there. We, we figured out, right? But yeah, go up, look for it.
Yep.
It's got the trash right there.
That's been placed by Kevin's, where do we have trash?
At least on my map, it's, it's right at the front entrance.
So we're here, isn't it?
For dumpsters.
Oh, it's down here, I don't, yeah, I don't show it. It's more located on this, because it's not part of my sidewalk, so I, I stop at the curb. We're very territorial architects and engineers. I don't go past the curb face.
So, normally it's in the rear versus the front entrance, so there was no other area?
Well, there's not a really distinct rear.
I was gonna say, what is, there is no rear of that building?
Because people are driving all the way around it, and and this is the view that when you come up the main entrance, up the hill, that's this view, which is why we tried to do something really nice there, that's gonna be the first thing you'll see when you drive up into the complex.
I'm just saying, I'm surprised you put it at the front, right at the front there.
Yeah, alternatively, there's not a lot of places that it fits.
Nope, we're done.
Maybe you can get here, but then you're still on the ground, and then you turn.
I'm saying, when you first, the lid. Yeah, right there, you gotta, you know, it's right there. And I don't know what time the garbage truck comes, but it, it's very small area, if a truck comes during the day, it would block out that whole lane versus in the rear. If we can look at, I don't know, how do you look, what do you feel?
Well, I think there's gonna be, uh, there is, or was a restriction on garbage collection, was supposed to be during off-hours. So they shouldn't be doing garbage during the day, anyway.
Okay.
Well, they're gonna have enclosures, though, right? The dumpsters are all supposed to have now, the, ah, that's a good question, you, you actually made me think, is the enclosure gonna look like the building it is with? Like, how are we gonna handle the enclosures? Is there just gonna be like a chain-link fence, it's gonna be just?
I think it's gonna be masonry, so if we brick veneer it or something decorative like we have, we can certainly do that with a gate.
What about that, if they match the enclosure to
It's gonna, it's gonna match the building.
Yeah, and if it's not during operational hours, I mean, it's not gonna make a difference, though. though.
Yeah, that's why the enclosure looks like it's, it's part of the building.
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
Okay. And then my second question is, when you get, when you go to the front of Aspen Dental, you got to make that left to pick up at Chipotle. Is, is there a sign there? Because I don't see one online.
That's more of a site plan.
I can't see it on that map, but I see it on this.
Yeah, you know what the problem is, is he, the, the architect did just the visual drawing of the building, and then it's like, it's not meshed like the two.
How do they know to make a left there to go to the pickup?
Well, it's all one-way.
That's what I'm saying. They can go, okay, so there's-
There's arrows on the ground, right?
There's something, yeah, okay.
Yes, correctional.
And Phil will review the, the striping plan and everything before it gets final, final. You know, Anthony, I did just one question. When you send over height, the new hydrant locations, for the buildings that you have, can you have the Siamese connections? Like, but what I'm looking for is just one overall site plan with all the hydrants and the ones that moved, and then like this building, he's, the Siamese is in, we're going to call the rear of this building, but-
Most likely, yeah, it would be.
I want my guests to see where that is.
Where they go into the building.
Well, we may ask you, you may have to put a remote connection to it. You know, if they, if they determine for whatever reason they can't get a rig back there, we may ask you to take, leave the fire pump from back there, a sprinkler from back there, but, but move us a, a remote connection to the front or side or the left or wherever.
Sure.
So physically, the paper you want to get will give you the overall plan.
Right.
And you see how we kind of broke into head sites for each one of these properties? Is it possible to-
Well, they're going to want to see one big overall, they're going to want to, they-
We'll give you the overall.
Yeah.
And then also, for each building we're showing, we can give you a sort of zoomed-in.
Yeah, if you could take that and then add the connecting, the connecting roads around it.
Okay.
So this way they can get a better idea of what the parking and everything looks around it, and then in relation, because they may, they may come back and say, listen, can you put a remote Siamese connection on the left or the right or the front, just because they can't get a truck back there?
But you know what I'm asking here, is I have to be an engineer and architect.
Talk to each other.
Talk to each other.
We all got to, we all got to cross as the bear.
We hate, we hate that part.
They're here.
Yeah.
Do you not have a project manager on this job?
Yeah, they're in the, they're in the back.
Yeah, Scott, we'll, uh, we'll get the full plan.
Okay.
And I'm assuming you require the, the light at the Siamese as well?
Yes.
We just had that battle in this project I was telling you about.
And they're all going to, they're all the buildings that require knock boxes as well as far as our new.
It's always in my spec.
You have the option for flush mount, but being your new construction, you're probably going to want to do-
Yeah. And we basically tell the contractor to coordinate with the fire inspector to where he actually wants it, but it's in my spec that every building gets-
Okay. So that's another thing I'm going to ask you for the requirement, you won't be able to see all without it.
I've been doing this for a couple of years now.
Now, we just, Woodbury just changed the law about a year ago to make it a requirement on all, on all new construction going forward. Before it was like a voluntary program, now it's, you can't get a CO without it on a, on a commercial building.
So you're, you're good.
Yeah. And then usually we can put on our back door, we'll put the label of the tenant, if it's a number or a name, so the back door, if the fire department or rescue coming, that'll be on that back door as well.
Okay. Sorry, we digressed a little bit.
Other things, comments?
No. Natalie?
Okay, so I have to be, um, sure. And note that a lot of our comments are repeated. Just to kind of reiterate, Building Three that you're reviewing now is connected to Building Four, that's Aspen Dental. So, um, you know, when you're reviewing your similarity and dissimilarity criteria to these buildings and the others that you have materials for, um, one of the things that's different from this application versus the last is the applicant is proposing, um, a white roof. It's flat. Technically, per your ridge preservation criteria, white is prohibited as a roof color, however, um, oh, Mr. Beats.
Can I ask you a question? Is that on the form? Because I don't remember seeing it on my drawings.
Uh, that white is prohibited?
No, that white's even being proposed.
Oh, I think it's on the drawings.
On my drawings, really?
Yeah.
Do I have to yell at my staff?
There was a, you know, my first comment, I think, was about consistency among the form and the drawings.
Yeah, and then I saw the white, and I was trying to find it in the car tonight, but I'll have to go speak to my staff because it wasn't specified.
It's going to be a black roof, so we don't have to worry about it?
Most likely.
Okay.
Unless we get a specific tenant that-
I think it should be a black roof, so we don't have to worry.
We only do the white if we get a tenant that specifically asked for it.
Honestly, I prefer that entirely, so if that's the direction you're taking, then just ignore my comment, and we'll look for revised materials.
Then I'm going to go yell at someone tomorrow.
The non-reflective window.
Retail, it's all clear.
With respect to the dumpster enclosure, you kind of already discussed that, too. There was a standard enclosure that was approved by the original site plan package. I know at least for one tenant, I think it's Starbucks, they had tenant-specific requirements. So we'll, what those would be the comments in our remarks, whether or not it's going to be a standard enclosure or tenant-specific. But I can now clarify that you would like the dumpster enclosure to consider to each building, kind of.
I think that's what the board is, you have this board that wants it correct. Okay.
So then the applicant should provide those materials, and I think your submission for you to look at. The, or Mr. Beats already discussed the signs, how they're compliant with the code. I've already said that you won't require master tenant sign plan, so that will be in Starbuck's or future comments. Again, that secret finding of each dormers, or features of dormers, large front windows, overhang, natural color, clearing, facade materials, that's something that of course you should consider when you're looking at ARB right here. And then last thing, again, that's kind of specific to this application, and I think one other for ARB, um, is the secret finding statement for Cavellis. I've suggested the use of a cedar-type screening fence for loading areas. So now you've kind of already seen where the loading areas, from both perspective to this building three and four, um, you know, our memo kind of reminds that it may not be appropriate to have a fence, but that landscaping in blue may be appropriate. We've kind of talked about the landscaping issue already, so obviously the layout of the buildings has changed, so we'll only update the landscaping plan that are required. And one thing that I did really raise in our prior review, or I think it's in our manual, we had to discuss it with the board, is there are requirements in the code for interior landscaping, you know, percentage associated with the site, and the number of parking stalls that need, so that's something that the applicant has to conform compliance with too. But anyway, so we'll look for a needed landscaping plan, but specifically, the secret finding statement suggests a cedar-type screening, cedar wall-type screening fence. So if the board thinks that's not appropriate for this, then we can make that finding, you know, or like this is something that I have to have in my material. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything for Natalie?
Kind of with the, uh, White EDGM is on the ARB application, not on your plan.
Consistent. Blame the board, he's the one that put the packet together.
I'll hold on to this.
So I don't have to yell at somebody tomorrow?
I, as far as the fences and loading areas, I don't know, I always think those are targets for trucks. Within, within six, within six months, they're usually backed over or broken or-
I agree.
So I don't think, yeah, I don't think it's a good idea to require them to put a fence in.
That was actually from Cavellis, where the loading docks.
Now, that's where that, that came from? I just, every time I've seen a fence in a loading dock, it's scratched, it's banged, it's, looks like-
You're a real mess.
They're not going to take care of it, so. The board's okay with, the board's okay with not reg, the requirement?
And I'm just going to kind of build that for any other application before you put this site, if that's okay, unless you would prefer to look at that on an individual basis.
I think it'd be, I think it's okay to keep it aside. I think having a cedar fence-
We have one spot, not the other. I think it's fine.
It's going to be like, what, why this, why this show up?
We'll make that a blanket approval there.
No. Any other question while we're talking about that? The question about the pitch roof and dormers, sort of similarly, do we need to address that?
So I think that the board is, I'm raising it to the board's attention. I think unless they take any exceptions to what the materials that you propose-
Okay.
Then I think otherwise is implied.
Good.
You're, you're accepting it.
Yeah, we're, no, we're accept, that's what, that's the conversation that we had up here. It's kind of like a mental reminder that's in, in there for us just to, because again, back when this was initially proposed, we didn't know, really have a good idea what was going to be there, so.
I hadn't been hired yet.
No, I get it. Appreciate that. Not, nothing, no. Happy to be here still?
Just, just a few comments on, you know, the building, either the roof or the floor you're visiting here, certain relationships play in. It shows access to that, but when they're leaving, it's not clear how they're going to get out.
How the truck's going to get out with the, do we know how that's going to work?
We will clarify that. We noticed it's a safe area, Phil, so we will, we'll clarify that in the next submission.
Okay.
And just look at the sign, weird to have the gas, weird offlane, and then the high gas lane. Just look at the sign over there, and the striping seems pretty there, but look inside of the gear.
Okay. Will do.
Do we have any other feedback? Anybody else on this, this particular application?
No.
Okay, make a motion to schedule a public hearing for April 5th. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, what's next on the agenda? Shops at Woodbury, ARB Building Four. Review ARB documents submitted for Building Four, Aspen Dental, to be located in, within previously approved mixed-use commercial centers. The property is located at intersection of LoSi Lane and Route 32 in Central Valley, and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 225, Block 1, Lot 34 dot 1, 34 dot 22, and 75.
Good evening again. Building Four, I'd say the only real changes that occurred were more aesthetics and facade windows. We tried to match, uh, the requirements of what Aspen and their prototype has. It's not exactly a prototype, and it's not exactly a stray building, it's somewhere in the middle. But basically, that's why they had to create a layout for their internal rooms to determine where they wanted windows and didn't want windows. So they, we basically mimicked their standard, uh, entrance, uh, that they like with their tower, and their colors, and their material, and their signage. Again, switching, just have two rooftop mechanical units to service this building, basically located in the center, behind all the parapets, so you'll have good screening possibilities there for that. And again, we actually had Aspen and another tenant almost the same time we had Starbucks and nobody else. So we basically worked with resizing and reworking the pilasters, their windows, and then changing the awnings. They wanted their blue, we're going, Aaron wanted a more consistent look for anybody that's not a national tenant, to go with the black awnings. So instead of the blue awnings that they would normally have, we're proposing black. But you can see Chipotle has it, Starbucks has it, another tenant in the other building has it, so that's going to be one of the consistent things that we'll have, either the canopy or the awnings. So we got Aspen to agree to that. But these colors are basically the colors of Aspen. Again, as we said, uh, you go around, it's a four-sided building. These are the kind of sized windows that they wanted, that works with their interior layout and their rooms, uh, for where they do their procedures and whatnot, so it works. The rear, again, we can work with you on the pilasters there, but we carried the stone around, we carried the, the stucco and that around. So I think it's, it's pretty basic, but it, everybody's different, but yet there's enough uniformity and consistency to tie the whole shopping center design together. Uh, we did look again at the facade signage, they're proposing just one, and we did the calculation on a chart on this drawing that shows that it's within the 10% of the facade area. Again, the colors, I believe, are three colors, you're allowed four, so we meet the ordinance there as well. So it's pretty straightforward, and again, in the last sheet, we brought the actual pictures of their materials and what's on their building. So that was kind of the overall theme, consistency, but enough diversity to not make it look boring, but to tie the whole design of the center together is, you know, the shops at Woodbury.
Are you, the glass, yeah, you said the glass, are you going to be, um, at the rear kind of covering or anything?
They might have internal blinds or shades or something, but yeah, the glass is meant to all be clear, clear glass.
Yeah, the, if you could put your finger where the parking is, okay, the next box over, no, that hole, no, to the right. That's not labeled online, I can't read it.
That's the loading area, right? That's the loading space.
Some signage or something, so nobody blocks it.
There is, yes. There is, yeah, it's probably not on this site plan, but it's, it's on our signing and striping plan.
That's, that's where people drive right past.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm concerned somebody might park there.
Yeah, they'll, it'll be signed, that it's a loading area.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll probably be striped and then posted sign too.
Correct.
There's no, and Phil will make sure, before we do the final sum of, that it's all there.
Okay.
Anything else?
If nothing else, I'm consistent.
Um, so just, again, not to kind of rehash everything, but when we were up at the site plan approval, I mentioned that a medical office is supposed to be proposed as part of the amended site plan. This is specific to this building, so I think that this approval is stayed until, um, the amended site plan is approved. But again, so if the use isn't approved, it's a-
Right.
Then otherwise, the only real common substance, I think, is just that the veneer and mortar color, that's up, needs to clarify, what that's going to be in this application, to see if there was any-
That was their prototype, so yeah, they kind of, they shouldn't have put the mortar color on, but that was from Aspen directly.
Okay.
Why that made the plans.
Right, so we'll just look for revision, we'll be revision to address that, and then we'll bring the stuff to sort of the other issues and brush a little bit, so again, have each roof dormer, bar, overhang, as long as you're good with that, and you won't take any exceptions to that.
Can you just put a random pink roof in the middle?
Nobody told me. Where was this two years ago? Nobody told me.
Two ye, yeah, wow.
Three years ago.
Three years ago.
Nineteen, it's a nineteen job number in my heart.
Okay, any questions for Natalie? Phil?
No.
Okay. Um, all right, um, no other comments, everybody's good?
Everybody's good.